How many terms has John been on?
I can say that for sure. I'm sure he'll answer. I know if he was on before me and I don't know if he was on one or two terms.
Thank you all for coming. I am Greg Manfred, the political relations and marketing specialist at the Chamber of Commerce and all here. Tonight's local forum will be screened live on my sweet water now Facebook page. Barry Tippy will be moderating the evening. This forum is intended to allow all candidates an opportunity to voice their position on present issues. The purpose is to educate the voting public on all of your positions and opinions on the issues. This is not attempting to embarrass any of the candidates or to debate or badger one another. This evening will be dedicated to candidates running for school board district number two. The agenda for the evening will run as follows. Each school board candidate will be given three minutes for an opening statement. We will move left to right beginning with John Malone. When all candidates have been given their opening statements, we will begin questions from the moderator. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer the questions. The order in which the candidates will answer each question has been predetermined using a random generator formula in Excel. If time allows, we'll be taking questions from the audience. Each candidate will have three minutes to make a closing statement. I will be keeping track of your timing. When I raise the yellow card means you have 30 seconds left to answer and when the red card goes up, you need to be finished answering. Now, I would like to introduce Barry Tippy, your moderator for tonight's forum.
My name is Barry Tippy and I've been fortunate enough to live in this great community for 21 years. I was asked by Lisa to come down and moderate tonight. I'm here to help. So I think we're gonna have fun. And I'm ready to go when you guys are.
My name is John Malone. I'm a 19-year resident of Green River. My wife Linda is a guidance counselor at Lincoln. I have one daughter, Rachel, who's a journalism professor at the University of Mississippi. I have son-in-law Phillip, who is a reporter for the Associated Press. And one granddaughter, Mary Catherine, who's a second grader. Everybody in Mississippi has two first names, so that's why she's Mary Catherine. I taught English and social studies, coached football and basketball, and was an athletic trainer for 36 years. I served in the US Army and Reserve from 1968 to 1974. As a board member, I have three responsibilities: policy, budget, and personnel. That's all. I do not micromanage. I do not second guess. I do not do anything outside of a call board meeting. I do take Linda lunch occasionally at Lincoln School, but other than that, I don't go in buildings unless I'm invited. And all the board members can tell you, we have no shortage of being invited. I've read Dr. Seuss enough that I almost know it by heart now. Policy, budget, and personnel, you would be hard-pressed to find out at any board meeting something that doesn't cover budget, policy, or personnel. But my main job as a board member is to make good decisions, help hire good people, and to put it bluntly, get out of the way. Because our administrators are hired to do administrative stuff. The board is elected for guidance and for stuff that boards have to do. You won't find me wandering the halls. You won't find me asking a principal why something happened. On a given day, boards are best seen and heard very little. And I try to follow that policy. Thank you.
I'm Alana Owens and I am running for the school board because I have six children in the school district. And I'm kind of unique because I have children in the elementary level, the middle school level, and at the high school. So I get a variety of information that comes to me just based on that. I'm running because my children have a big...I have a vested interest in how the school district does and I would like to see good things happen in our district. I was PTO president at Washington Elementary for the last couple of years and that gave me a lot of insight into what is going on and happening at the schools. And I saw some of the successes as well as the challenges that teachers and staff and even parents and the principals face in our district. So I think there's ways that we can work to achieve the mission of the district, which is learning for all, which I think is a fantastic mission. As we collectively work together to gather information from all of the groups that are necessary, the teachers, as well as parents and staff, and bring everybody's collaborative efforts together, we can have a wonderful program. The vision of the district is inspiring excellence every day. And I believe we have amazing teachers in our district. And the board's role...the board's role is really to help support the teachers so that they can do their job. They're the ones that have been educated on how to do their job. And as a board, we need to help support them and find ways to make it possible for them to do their job effectively and have the support and the guidance they need from the board that they need. Let's see. As we improve communication, we will be able to increase the efforts that we have here. I really believe in our school district and the people that we have here and we can make it even better. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to run for the school board. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rochelle Morris and I'm running for school board because I believe that it is important that we have parents represented on the school board as well as a good mix of other individuals. Right now, there's currently one person that has children in the school district. No one can advocate for our children better than we can. And we know what it's like for them to be in school. We talk to the teachers daily. We show up to parent teacher conferences. If we're not willing to step up and advocate for our children and help the district continue to go in a positive direction, then we're not setting a good example for our kids. So, a little background on me, I've always been passionate about children and teachers. I worked at DFS for several years and I currently run one of the most high-quality early education centers in Rock Springs. I run the Young at Heart Early Learning Center. And I'm not afraid to toot my own horn. We do an amazing job preparing kids for school and education. It's something I'm passionate about on all levels. And I feel like as a parent and someone who understands a little bit of that, because you'll never understand all of it, I will advocate for you, I will advocate for your kids, and I will advocate for teachers in this district. And that's why I'm running, because my kids are here and I want to be their voice and the voice for other people's children as well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Castilian. Thank you to the Green River Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum. I'm seeking election to the school board because I want to continue my service to our community. The most important experience I think I bring to the board is that I'm a mom. I have three children attending school in this district, one in high school and two at Lincoln Middle School. They are receiving a great education and I want to ensure that every child in our district has the same opportunities for achievement that they have. My husband and I were both fortunate enough to attend school in this district and we're both Green River High School graduates. We chose to raise our family here in Green River in part because of our experiences growing up here. We both had teachers who impacted and changed our lives, who helped us grow in confidence intellectually and to develop our talents. We continue to have outstanding teachers in our district who need the support of the board to continue educating and nurturing our children. I have enjoyed many hours volunteering in my children's classrooms. This has helped me in building relationships with their classmates and parents, with the teachers and administrators, and I have gained a great admiration for all that they do to make our schools successful. This combined with my experience serving on other local boards and church and community organizations has helped me develop the skills necessary to be your board trustee. I chose to run for the school board because I see the importance of education in preparing our children for their future. If elected, I will prioritize effective communication between the board, educators, and community. And I will listen, ask questions, and make decisions that are best for our kids. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Stanton. I was born and raised in Rock Springs. Might be a bad word to hear sometimes, but I graduated from the University of Wyoming in 1998 with a bachelor's science degree. And after college, I worked my way up through several companies. I got to travel the country and do fiber op...install fiber optic networks all over the states. As much as I enjoyed seeing the different states and experiencing those communities, Wyoming was always home for me. My wife Kathy, she's a Green River native. In 2007, she had the opportunity to take a teaching position here in Green River and we made the decision to move back to Green River from Iowa. We have two girls, they're 11 and seven, both attend school in the district. And one of the main reasons we returned to Wyoming so that they could have the opportunities that we had growing up here and the things that are in Sweetwater County that aren't other places in the country. Most important was the quality of the schools and the opportunities that the kids have in those schools. They just don't exist in a lot of other places in the country, so... And to maintain and grow those opportunities, we need knowledgeable people who are willing to volunteer their time and experiences to serve in the governance of those institutions, specifically school district. My career has landed me as the president of Industrial Services in Rock Springs. It's an industrial maintenance and service company. I enjoy my work and the people I get to spend my day with, but I've also worked diligently involving myself in the community. I currently serve as a chairman of the Trona Valley Credit Union, as well as the co-chair for the local chapter of the Mule Fanatic Foundation. I was also elected in 2014 to the Castle Rock Hospital District Board. So I've got a lot of service in the community already. And part of the reason I'm running is because I understand the commitment that's required and I'm willing to be prepared to be an effective board member. And I think I bring a unique perspective that doesn't exist on the board already. An effective school board should be filled with members who have a vested interest in improving the district and always putting kids first. And a lot of that's written ahead of time, but I do feel that way, that the kids first. And I agree with what everybody else has said so far, so thank you.
I'm Robin Stice. I'm running for reelection to the board. I originally came from Michigan in 1981. My husband and I both got teaching jobs here and have been here ever since. Nobody's let us go yet, so that was a good thing. My son is a teacher in the district. He teaches art. My daughter-in-law's a teacher in the district and she is this year a second grade teacher at Truman. I have three wonderful grandchildren, the best students probably in the district, but they're loving their education here too. So I just believe that we need to continue that excellence in our teaching staff and believe in what they do and how they do it. And it's not just the teachers that are important, it's our custodians, our support staff people that keep this building going. And I just ask how many lunches they...our lunch staff does a year. And it was 337,000. So you can imagine how busy those people are during the day. And, you know, we have many other people that work very hard and I think every employee is important and we need to consider every employee in any decision we make for the district. I would like to continue that. I think a little bit different than John. I like being in the schools. I've been in every school every year that I've been on the board. And it's not to go get a gotcha thing. I want to see what the great things they are that they're doing. And boy, are there great things going on out there. I also have been to the rural schools too. So I think that's really important to be involved that way and I'd like to continue that. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you, candidates. And we're gonna get ready to start answering the questions or I'm gonna ask you some questions. It's kind of exciting night because I get to ask you questions and not mirandize you. So that's gonna be kind of different for me. We're gonna ask five questions. Greg stated earlier, you have two minutes to answer them. I'm gonna read the question once. If it gets to be your turn and it's kind of down in the list and you're towards the end and you forgot what the question is, I'll be more than happy to rephrase that or ask you, you know, reread it as you ask. But the first thing I want to do is have all of you take an extremely, extremely deep breath and hold it and breathe out and just, you know, tell us why. This is your chance to excel and show us what you're made of. Okay? So when you're ready, we'll go ahead and get started with Ms. Stice. You're gonna be the first one right off the bat, so last in the first.
I didn't take a big enough breath.
What are the factors on which you'll base decisions as a school board member?
What are the factors?
Yeah, what factors would you utilize to base decisions as a school board member?
First and foremost, it's what's best for our children and our staff would be next. Depending on what that situation is, how you react to it would be different for each situation. So, but that's always my first consideration is how is it going to affect our staff, not just our teachers, but our whole staff and our children. Always, that's my first thing I think of.
Thank you. Mr. Malone, you're up next, sir. Same question.
Making the best decision for the children, as Robin said, most of the time, that's pretty easy. Then you come across Jackson closing. And you wonder, after you've made the decision, made the vote, knowing that the options were not only limited, there weren't any. And you go home and you think, did I forget something? Did I leave something out of my reasoning for the decision? But that's just part of it. We get the big bucks for making the hard decisions. You make the best you can, you make it in the best interests of students, and you go along with your life. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Morris?
Yes.
You're next, ma'am.
The factors I would use when decision-making is, first of all, what are the facts? What research can I do to back up or not back up those facts so that I'm making an informed decision? And then, of course, what is best for the kids and what is best for the district? Because it's...district choices affect the kids and you have to look at all of those factors and any information you can get to make sure you're most informed before you make a vote or you make a decision.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Stanton?
I think the main factor is how it's gonna affect the students. I think that's the first thing we should think about with every decision, how it's gonna affect the students. I agree with what Robin said about the staff as well, but I think it boils down to the kids. And John mentioned that there are no choices and sometimes I think it feels that way. I would like to see, be able to get to that point without having, feel like there's no choices, where you've covered all the bases before you get to that decision. But I think the factor is how it's gonna affect the kids is really the most important of all the decisions.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Owens?
I would base my choice on my children, but I would also want input from people around the district. And I think one example that could be shown is in the past, maybe they've sent home a calendar and we've been given like three different options, but most of the calendars look almost identical with very little change, starting in August and ending in May and maybe a few other days that might be different. I think I would want real input from the community, not just my agenda laid out and here's an option between what I think is right. I think we need real input from members all across the community.
Thank you, ma'am. And lastly, Ms. Castilian?
I agree with what these guys said too. It should always come down to the kids, like what's gonna be best for the kids before I'd make a vote. I think that's always a question I'll ask, what's best for the kids? It does also affect staff and I think that that's important too. And I know that there's gonna be tough decisions and things that not everyone's gonna agree on. I think that what I can contribute is to do my research, to ask thorough questions of everyone that it's gonna impact and get their opinions and find out what information they have. Maybe they have other research that I hadn't found. And then I think that ultimately, we have to negotiate agreeable outcomes. And it's not always gonna be easy, but we are here to do what's best for our kids and their education.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Question number two. What do you see as the opportunities and challenges in the district currently? Mr. Stanton, you're gonna lead off this one.
The opportunities, I think, are...would be unlimited, but the challenges you have is the budget. So you can make pie in the sky plans all you want, but if the budget doesn't back it up, it's not gonna matter. The state, I think we saw in the last session, they're looking at making big changes in how schools are funded. And I think that is our biggest challenge going forward, is how we're going to maintain the quality that we want, expand that quality, and make it fit within our budget. So it's gonna take strong school boards, strong superintendents, strong advocates from the community. Parents are gonna have to, all of them are gonna have to voice up to their legislators and express how they want the future of Wyoming's education to look. To me, that's the biggest challenge. The opportunities are all over the place. The way things can be done with distance learning and hands-on projects, I think are...there's a lot of that available and it can all be explored, but it all costs money. And if that problem isn't addressed, then the opportunities aren't gonna be there. We're not gonna be able to afford them.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Morris?
I think one of the unique opportunities that we have here is we are a smaller district and we have some amazing staff and people. And so we really have an opportunity to let those people shine in areas that they excel at and are strong at. And we do, I think, a good job of doing that, encourage people in those areas to keep pursuing those things, helping with ACT testing at schools. We have a lot of teachers and other staff that step up and help kids and that's an amazing thing because we are small enough that a lot of kids get a lot of extra help. Challenges, I agree with Dan. I think funding is a huge challenge for any school and it's difficult when parents and other people are not stepping up to legislators and talking and telling them, we need the money, we need the funding. And so that is something that is huge, I think, across the nation, but it's something that I have committed myself to doing whether I'm on the school board or not, is I will go to legislators and I will talk to them about how their cuts in funding affect our students in our district and why it's important to not do that and find other areas to keep the money here.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Stice?
I agree with what you were saying. I think the funding with the legislatures are frustrating right now, to say the least. I've had many conversations with them. I've gone down there and talked to them and sometimes I just walk away shaking my head and wonder how some of them got elected. I mean, we really are fortunate here locally. We have some very supportive legislators. They do what they can down there, but unless you're down there fighting the battle, they're closing the door on anything that we need in schools pretty much. And it's frustrating, but I love your attitude that you think that that's important to do that because it is essential to keep the great education going we have here. And the less money you have, the less teachers you can have, the less you can give students that they need in the classrooms. And so I think that is the most essential part of that.
Shouldn't have gotten me going there now.
Ms. Castilian?
I agree with what they've said about the budget. That is definitely a huge opposition and challenge that we're facing right now with decreasing funds and the need to retain good teachers is important and essential to our kids' development. The opportunities, I think, are endless. We have wonderful staff that, through coaches, the activities that our kids are able to be involved in, those things help them to grow and become better people and to develop responsibility and all those things that we need for them to be able to graduate and be successful adults. And a big part of that is the relationships that our kids develop with their teachers, with the staff around our schools, with each other, with our resource officers. All of those things are essential to creating better opportunities for our kids.
Thank you. Ms. Owens?
You know, we have a great district. We had 92% of children graduate last year from high school, which is fantastic. But something that I feel that we could improve on is our relationship with the junior college. We have one right here close that we could have a better connection with. I know there is some of that going on, but I think that that relationship could be strengthened to help with our technical skills that are needed in this area, that if we work with the junior college here and have a better relationship, we will have more that are ready to enter the workforce and more that are ready to engage in a four-year degree. Some of the other challenges might be with our security. Security across the nation has been very...you know, it's on a lot of people's mind. And I think we actually have a pretty good system in place and we can...but we have the opportunity to make even a stronger alliance as we work with the Green River Police Department and help do training and scheduling there so that staff is not surprised by things that might happen in school, that they're prepared for circumstances and things that might happen in the schools.
Thank you. Mr. Malone?
In the last three or four years, we've lost 200 to 300 years of teaching experience. Not because they moved away, because they retired. And that 200 to 300 years of teaching experience is what I think the biggest challenge, recruitment and retention. Utah's got Proposition One next week or whenever the election is. Utah's got Proposition One next week or whenever the election is about a huge increase in educational funding. It used to be we could take teachers that might go to Utah and our salary schedule would keep them here. I'll be blunt. A kid coming out of college that comes to Green River to interview, to teach, and the salaries are about the same between Salt Lake City and Green River. The first thing the kid is going to ask at Green River is where's the mall? And sure enough, all things being equal, that new teacher is going to go to Utah. We have got somehow to get a salary package together, reward our retained teachers, and also know that we have got to compete. Wyoming is not a high-paying teaching state anymore. It's just one of a number. Thank you.
Okay, we're way ahead of schedule because everybody seems to be prepared. So I'm going to ask the audience, if you have any questions at this time and you want to, and you want to write those down. If you can see Lisa at the back table, she has some index cards and pens. And we'll go ahead and field some of those questions, but we have a couple more to go here. But I want to give you that opportunity before it gets right on top of the end of it to go ahead and do that if you're interested. Question number three. In your view, what has a district done well over the last four years? And what has a district done poorly that you would change? Mr. Malone, you're going to start that question, sir.
Good. My memory is so short that it's good for me to be able to write that down and not have to remember the question. You're setting in one of the things we've done well. Think of all the things we've built, remodeled, et cetera, without passing a millage increase. Wilson, Expedition Academy, the addition to Lincoln. All of those things from the Facilities Commission and not on the local taxpayers. What have we done poorly? I think we could always do better in anything we do. Ninety-two percent's a great graduation rate. Let's give a shot at ninety-four percent. Are we communicating as much as we need to with our parents about whatever we need to communicate with them? The calendar's a good example, okay? We have a calendar committee and bless my pointy little head, I'm on it. And obviously, we are not doing a good job of taking that information from the calendar committee and making it district-wide so the input that you're talking about can happen. Our faculty is off the charts. Our faculty is so good and they don't get much credit. We've got to do better at rewarding our faculty. If nothing else, just an attaboy every now and then to let them know they're appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Ms. Owens?
I would agree with the communication. Communication could be better between, um, what's going on with the board and what's, um, the community and what teachers and parents are really feeling with what's going on. I think sometimes after the fact or we only get mild input or information or it's mixed input of what we hear, as a parent in the district. So I think that could be improved. I also, um, but I feel like we do have fantastic teachers. And, um, if, if they're really supported and given the training that they need and the, they're not feeling like they're going to lose their job because of a budget cut, then they can really effectively teach and do their job and help our, our children gain the education that all of us want for them.
Thank you ma'am. Ms. Castilian, you're up next.
Okay, so I'll start with, uh, Horley. I, uh, think we could have, uh, communicated better with the school changes and, um, the reconfiguration of the schools. I felt like I talked to a lot of teachers who were still coming close to the end, not sure where they were going or other support staff. And even, uh, the kids wanted to know, they liked to know what's going on and plan ahead and weren't quite sure how there's, you know, it was going to be configured. And I know that was a huge, um, undertaking and I'm sure that that had a lot to do with it too. But I think as a board, um, and as if I was elected, that's something that I would want to do. Even if there's not sure answers, just to let people know that it's being worked on and that, uh, an answer will be coming shortly. What we're doing well, again, like everyone else has said, we have a great graduation rate. Of course, we can always strive to, um, increase that more too. Um, I know that the LLI program in Truman has done amazing things for those kids and their, and their reading and that that's been rolled out this year. And I'm excited to see where that takes, um, the readers in our district too. One thing that I think we do really well is the relationships between staff members. I was talking to one of our resource officers and, um, he was telling me that the greatest success that we have with our school safety is the fact that they have good relationships with the administration and with the teachers and with the students. And that having that trust, um, is the most important thing in keeping our school safe. Because if something were to happen, everybody's on the same page. And trust that everyone will be performing their portion of, um, what needs to be done. And I see that all the time too with, um, our teachers and staff and, and everyone. And so I think that that's something that we do really, really well.
Thank you. Mr. Stanton?
One thing I think it's, uh, important to keep in mind, I know from my experience on other boards, it's really easy from the outside to judge the decisions that were made. And, uh, it's really hard to be completely informed. But I think that's the board's job is to get that information out there. And as everybody else has said, that communication to the community. I don't think people in the community understood why we were going from a K-four to a K-five system and moving sixth graders to Lincoln School. As a parent in the district, I didn't understand that. I have a wife who can explain it to me, so fortunately I understand it better now. But I don't think as a community, that was spelled out very well. Um, and I don't think, uh, getting ahead of closing Jackson School. I didn't understand how that came about in the span of one year. It didn't. It seemed that way. I think that could have, uh, been handled better and been ahead of a year or two before that. So, uh, as far as positive things, I think the district, as everybody else has said, we've got a great graduation rate. We've got assessment scores that are above expectations in several schools. Those are things that you, uh, want in a district and we need to continue to strive to, as they've said, uh, keep the good teachers so, um, they can continue those things. I think things like every kid with a computer. My kids are fortunate enough to have access to them, but there are a lot of kids that don't. So the way things work in today's world, that's important for them to stay abreast with everything they need to do in school. I, I do appreciate the district's, I think, invested money in having communication. It's there, the teachers use it. I've got a few teachers for my kids that I get an email from them every day about what's going on in the classroom. I don't feel it's my responsibility to hound my kid about that every day, but the, the information's there. If we were having an issue, I would know about it from that teacher. Some of them not so much, but I think the district's done a good job of making that available to some of the, to the teachers. Some of it's just a training thing too, so. That's all I have.
Thank you sir. Ms. Morris?
I think, uh, one of the reasons the district has done amazing at is with the budget. As cuts have come, um, we still have beautiful buildings. We have technology. We have, our kids have access to some amazing things, um, that, um, they've been really driving those pots of money and bringing those into the district and kids benefit from that. And I think one thing that we can always improve on is communication and transparency. Major changes should never be, uh, a surprise to anyone. Parents, staff, children. I think getting ahead of the game and sharing information as you can is always beneficial. It, uh, helps lessen up people's assumptions and thoughts about why things are happening the way they are. And just sharing information, being transparent is always, you can't lose when you do that. You show that you're an open door, you're giving people the information and, uh, doesn't leave much to the imagination. And people can come ask more questions and be involved. And you might get more parental involvement or other people in the community involved when that information is shared early and quickly among people when you know things may be coming up, even if it's a year or two. People are listening.
Thank you ma'am. And Ms. Dice?
Well, most things were covered very well and I kept writing things down, crossing them out because someone else said them. But yeah, I think we have done an excellent job with the construction. Our, our buildings are, um, really nice to walk into. They stay that way because we have a good staff that keeps them clean and works really hard at that. And I'm pretty proud of that. And when I visit all the buildings, it always amazes me how clean they are. I can't say I've ever walked into a building or a bathroom in a building and it was dirty or messy. They were all very clean. And I think that's important for kids. I think it's important to keep kids healthy, to keep your buildings clean. So I, I think that's something that we do really well. Our staff does that. They're getting harder and harder to hire. And that's a concern for me to, um, we need to find a way to get those people because they're getting jobs other places. And we really need them in our building. They do a great job. I think the other thing that I think is fantastic is that every one of our kids has a computer. I mean, you can't beat that. They have access to information, they can look things up and they know things. And my grandson will come home and say, Mom, or Grandma, this is what I learned on the computer today. I said, when did you learn that? Are you playing with it under the desk or what? And he said, oh, we spend a lot of time learning things on our computers. And I, and I really liked hearing that. Some of the areas that I'd like to see us, um, do a little bit better with. I'd like some more celebration of, um, the, the achieve, achievement of our staff and recognition of our staff when good things are happening. Everybody knows that the more you praise a child, the better they're going to do. Adults are no different. And I believe we just need to spend more time doing that. We do recognitions during board meetings and things like that. But I think we have to be more intentional about that. So I would like to see that improved.
Thank you very much. Some of you have kind of touched on this next question a little bit in your response to other questions. As a school board trustee, what will you do to help ensure our schools are preparing students for continuing education and the workforce? And Ms. Castilian, you get to take us into that round.
Okay. So to ensure that our students are prepared, I know we have a really good, uh, program with, uh, in the high school with the kids being able to take college courses. And I think that that's really a great opportunity for them. I also think that we just need to make sure that each child is challenged. I know that we focus on the kids that need to be caught up to grade level and, um, but we need to make sure that like the kids at the top of the class aren't bored and not being challenged. Um, I think that's important so that they feel accomplished and like going to school is, uh, worth their time. And it makes their teachers, I believe, feel, um, good about being able to challenge them. But I know it's hard in the classrooms. The range of, um, learning is vast and it's hard and it's a challenging job. But I think we don't only have to prepare them for college. It's not going to be everybody's step after graduation. So, um, I'm glad we offer like, uh, mechanics and, uh, woods and all of those sorts of programs that can help them. Like Alana was saying, it would be good to offer more technical skills to, um, help some of those kids that once they graduate, they're able to get a good-paying job and, um, be able to support themselves if that's the, their next step after high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Malone?
I'll use two examples. Number one, we have this computer program down in Locational that virtually teaches you to load a front-end loader, a caterpillar, a bulldozer, all those sort of things. Has joysticks and so forth. I only know one certification that if a student finishes our program, they're automatically certified in the front-end loader thing, I think is the one. And there is a lot, uh, there's probably a lot more demand for a front-end loader program or operators than our English teachers right now because of the economy. Well, that's fine, but we're still turning out these kids that can operate this equipment. The other thing is our anatomy table. You may have cut up a frog and a starfish and I don't know what in biology. With this anatomy table, you can take a human body, look at the nerves, look at the blood vessels, look at all the organs, take the organs out, look at them in three dimensions and put them back in. We've already had health professionals in the area say that people using those anatomy tables in our anatomy and physiology classes are going to be so ahead when they get ready for a career in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Mr. Stanton?
I think, uh, preparing, uh, preparing kids for continuing education in the workforce. Not every kid is, uh, going to go on to a four-year school. That was pushed for a long time. I think we've realized more now and that, that, uh, certification education has become more popular. Uh, Western is, you know, in the top ten in the country for, uh, two-year education. So I think there's plenty, there's a lot of opportunities there. Alana alluded to, uh, continued, um, work with the college and getting our kids from co, from high school into those programs early if possible, I think. I think we need, uh, hands-on classes. John's talking about anatomy tables, but, um, computer programming and circuits and, um, oil-filled, uh, radio programming, things like that. These kids, something might spark an interest for them. It may not be their forever career, but it may be something that gets them into a field that they wouldn't have known about otherwise. And then I think we also need to, uh, prepare kids for life outside of school and work. They have to be able to, uh, balance a checkbook. They have to be able to, um, show up on time and work a full day and, uh, be respectful. I think we can need to continue those things. It's not just a matter of getting them into college or getting them into a two-year degree. We need to continue to teach them the basics that, uh, um, not all of them get taught at home. Some of them are expected to learn it at school. And so I, the teachers have a hard job with that. I don't envy them most days for that experience, but I, I think, uh, we need to support them in continuing that work, so.
Thank you sir. Ms. Morris?
Um, I think preparing kids for life outside of their formal education, uh, what we have to do is create opportunities for them. To expose them to some of those things in school that they may not be getting because a lot of those kids get on that. The halfway scholarship is an amazing thing. They get on that track and it kind of sets the tone for the rest of their high school. So they may not be getting a chance to be exposed to the arts, um, to the vocational and technical programs. So finding opportunities and ways for them, um, to experience those. And maybe that's something they're interested in. How do we create well-rounded individuals that know their options and their opportunities? Helping them find ways to do those programs and things that they're interested in that don't always include a four-year school. Four-year school is not for everybody. Tech and vocational programs, um, people are missing out on arts and drama and theater and, um, things that they're not exposed to as much anymore and chosen society. And if we want kids to be successful, we have to show them everything that there is to offer and, um, help them see those opportunities.
Thank you ma'am. Ms. Owens?
I feel like I've kind of touched this, but, or covered it. But I really, I strongly believe that as we work with, um, making stronger alliances with the college that we'll have more of all of the things spoken of, all of the, we'll have more opportunities for tech. That the, that the- that the, that the school district can't afford to do, but they already have at Western Wyoming Community College. And so we, as we join an alliance, it's not extra added expense. It's something that we can use at both places. We can use our resource from the community. And as we do this, they will have more exposure to trades and things that are needed in this area. But I, I think there's also a need to help push those that are willing to do a four-year degree and, and that's okay too. Four-year degree can be for some ki- some kids as well. I hope all my kids go to a four-year degree. Maybe they'll have a trade too, but I, I, I strongly believe in helping kids get a good, solid foundation so that they will be successful in their personal lives and in their life with a career as well.
Thank you ma'am. Ms. Stice?
I really believe giving our students an opportunity to have a multitude of experiences. And I think our district does a pretty good job of that. We cover all the arts, arts, music, drama, all that stuff where kids can find their little niche. I had an experience, I was just at the high school and saw the table that John was talking about and that, it also does animals. Did you know it did animals too? No, just saying. It's phenomenal. So if you get a chance to see that, do that. That's an experience beyond an experience that kids would normally get in a high school. I was in the art room and I was just surprised at the number of students in there. So I was with the principal and I said, "Wow, are all these classes this big in the music and all the others?" And he goes, "Yeah, they're really, kids really enjoy these." And there was a student there when I was talking about this. He goes, "Mrs. Stice, did you know that if you take all the arts classes, that you'll score 10 points better on the SAT?" Didn't know. But it was just cool that he knew that and he understood that there's a variety of things out there. And obviously, this was a very bright child who's probably taking everything else in this school, but he, he enjoyed those classes. And I think they're essential that we keep those so that we can find out what kids really want to do with their life, where they want to go. Unless they have those variety experiences, they're gonna, you know, struggle a little bit. And I, I really enjoy our speech and debate teams. I mean, those kids get skills that they'll use throughout their lifetime doing that. So, that's my thought on that.
Thank you ma'am. Question number five. In your eyes, should teachers and school officials be held accountable for student success or failure? And if so, how should their success or failures be gauged excluding standardized testing? And you get to take that one, Ms. Owens, right off the bat.
Perfect. You know, I think it's really hard to gauge how a teacher's doing just based on testing because tests are only a piece of what's really happening in the classroom. As I've been in the classroom, I've seen how a teacher can teach and can teach in multiple ways and, you know, sometimes it still goes over some of the kids' heads. And, but what I think can't be shown on a test is the fact that one of these children might really, really like science that isn't even tested in the elementary school grades or the lower grades and that can't even be gauged until later on in life. So I think just gauging it on English and math doesn't really give us a full picture. And so it's kind of hard to go with just what a standardized test is telling us. And it's hard to hold a teacher accountable for a standard that might not really be reachable based on the fact that their kids might have areas that they're interested in. Now, I, having said that, I do believe that all children should be able to read and do math because you can't do anything in life without those two skills. But I think that's something that would need to be collaborated between teachers and parents and the board to come up with something that helps teachers feel successful and, and helps kids be successful.
Thank you ma'am. Ms. Stice?
I do believe there needs to be some accountability and I believe the teachers need to believe that they're being held accountable for what they're doing. But I also believe we have administrators in those buildings who should be helping those teachers by walking through their classrooms often, finding out what's going on, you know, on a weekly or daily basis, if you could even do that. If a teacher is struggling, I believe it's that administrator's job to make sure he's doing all he can to help that teacher in finding ways to make them more effective. If we don't, and staff development is another one I think is essential to getting our teachers to do a better job in the classroom. I agree. I think we have some of the best teachers I've seen anywhere, but everybody can grow and everybody can learn. And I think right now, I'm seeing a big push for the principals to be in those classrooms and working together. The teachers working together to help each other. I think that's really important. But somewhere down the road, there's gotta be some accountability for what those kids are learning. And so I think that's what our administrators are there for. We expect them as a board to do that job. So that's where I think we need to make sure that when we see those test scores, we start asking, asking some questions. Well, why are they lower with this teacher when that teacher's teaching the same thing as the other teacher? What is that one doing better? Can that teacher help the other one grow and become a better teacher? So, I mean, we're not singles in this. We're a group and we should be fighting together to make every kid walk out of this district with the skills they need to succeed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Malone?
Accountability has always been a moving target. It used to be math accountability was make sure that you have general math and business math before you can graduate. That's it. Then Sputnik went up and accountability in math became, "We better get these kids in algebra, geometry and so forth, or the Russians are gonna get us." Accountability starts with each individual teacher, but it also starts with each individual parent. If you don't take an interest in what your kid is doing in math or anything else and you're depending upon that teacher in 55 minutes a day to do everything that needs to be done, you're in for a long wait. Accountability, that moving target, starts in kindergarten or before and ends at graduation, give or take. Everybody wants accountability, but no, not a lot of people want to pay the price. I promise you, the teachers, the administrators around here are paying the price. As parents, you got to buy into that.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Castilian?
Yeah, so I agree. There does have to be some sort of accountability. I think we all do better knowing that we're accountable for something. I do think that too comes from the administration being in the classrooms and observing the teachers and helping them along as they struggle. I think it's also with teachers coming to their administrators and saying, "This is where I'm struggling with this specific child and I can't seem to cross that barrier to get to him." And having them help or their, having their other teachers around them help or other staff. I think that helps with success, but I think success is a broad term. What's successful for one student is maybe a failure for another because B for one kid is great because they've worked super hard and for another kid, they didn't study and they gotta be. And so that's not a success for them. So I think we need to, as a school district, celebrate the successes that we have, but also push the kids to do better and to do something challenging and to work hard because when they push themselves harder than they think that they can, that's when they really feel that success and that drives them to do better. Ultimately, I think the accountability is with the student. I fully expect my kids to do their best and I'm trusting that their teachers are, are teaching them the material, but it comes down to them and what they're putting into the classroom too. And I think that our students need to understand that too, that they're accountable for their own education. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Mr. Stanton?
I would agree that you have to have accountability at some level. I think everybody benefits from constructive criticism, constructive being the key word. There's good, there's good teachers and there's bad teachers, just like there's good students and there's bad students. I don't think every teacher can be brought up to the level that they should be to stay as a teacher. There's probably some that need to go away. But unless you have a measure to do that, I don't know how you can justify it. And I agree with everybody that the administrator and peer evaluations are a key tool in that. The administrators need to be in the classroom so they can see how that's going. You can't judge it from the test scores because math class is a totally different thing than PE. And math and science are even different. So you have to be able to tell how they're getting along with what their plan was, how they're managing their classroom and the kids that are in it, how they're managing the high kids and the low kids. Not everybody has the opportunity to split those up into different groups. I, I think the kids benefit from that when the lower kids are working together to get each other up and the higher kids are able to excel. But when you've got a mixed class that you can't separate, those teachers have a big challenge on their hands and, but as everybody had said, I think accountability, you have to have some measure to know if you're doing better. So.
Thank you, sir. Lastly, Ms. Morris?
Yes, I think we should hold teachers and officials accountable, but with that we have a responsibility to make sure that those people are receiving the support and things they need to be able to teach kids effectively and to help those kids succeed. Are we giving them freedom and flexibility in the way they teach and the way they run their classrooms so that they're reaching kids and helping them do the best that they can do? Are we giving them support when they ask if they need something different? If we can provide it, are we? Are we looking at different things and helping them? Not everybody fits in a box. So if we want to hold teachers accountable, we have to also make sure that we're stepping up and with other school officials as well, not just teachers, but that they are supplying teachers and everyone in the building what they need to make those kids successful. Because not every kid is gonna learn the same way as we all know. And so we have to have flexibility and freedom. And then, yes, if you've given them every opportunity to help that child, then there's accountability.
Thank you ma'am. Question six is gonna be a question from the audience. As a board member, would you stand up for what you believe even if it's not the general consensus? How would you show, or how would you share your feelings and still be a team player? We're gonna start with Mr. Stanton on that one.
Uh, that's the reason I'm running, because I would stand up for what I believe in. I think that getting along to go along doesn't work all the time. There's instances where that's a good thing, but I think it's obvious from the amount of people that are running for this office that not everybody agreed with how things have gone the last year. So if you're not interested in standing up for what you believe, then you shouldn't be a candidate. The other side of that though is, it's a board of seven people. It's not a ruler of one. So you have to be able to work with your other board members. And I think there's relationships there that you have to build and trust one another that they're doing the work, that they're putting in the effort that you're putting in to be an informed board member and to bring to the table good input. Everybody should have an opinion about everything. They don't always have to share it, but they should be able to be called upon to have an informed opinion about the decisions that you're gonna make at that meeting. And if, if I don't agree with what's happening, I'm not afraid to voice my opinion opposite. It doesn't mean I don't respect the people that I'm working with, but I don't always have to agree with them to respect them. So.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Morris, you're next.
Um, absolutely. That's a part of why I'm running. And I think just because you disagree, there's no emotion attached to that. That it's not personal. My opinion, if I disagree, I'll be based on fact. I don't mind sharing that. And I, I'll be honest, I'm not up here to make friends. I'm up here to do what's best for kids. But I will never be rude. I will never be disrespectful and I will always be appropriate and professional.
Thank you. Ms. Stice?
I really believe a board cannot function unless you have your own opinion. Each person brings something to the board. You don't have seven people for nothing. I mean, we should be listening to their opinions, respecting what they say. Do I have to agree with what someone else says? Absolutely not. But I sure can disagree and still show that person the respect that they deserve. And I think it's important that we communicate with each other. If something's bothering me, I'm gonna go tell that person. I think I owe it to them to say, you know, "I wish we could handle this a little differently or do it a different way." And, "Do we have to argue up here?" That should never happen. I absolutely believe we should never be arguing with each other. We can discuss it in a professional way.
Thank you ma'am. Ms. Castilian, you're next ma'am.
Thank you. Yeah, like everybody else said, that's why I'm running. I will stand up for what I believe. I think we all will come with our own opinions and I think having varying views is what can make a board stronger because it will open up the discussion to maybe find other ways to come to an agreement. I think that it's important to not come in thinking that I have all the answers and with an open mind and ready to see what other people's views are or what the facts are that they found and weigh those and stand by my opinion and what I believe in at the end. So if I can't stand up for what I believe, then I shouldn't be here.
Thank you ma'am. Ms. Owens?
Yes, I think the important part of being a board is, is the varying opinions that each board member brings and that's what makes a team. When you come together and you just agree, then you didn't get anything better out of what happened because no, there were no varying opinions and you didn't hear any sides to the story. So I think by having a board of seven people, you can build trust within the board and be able to trust what they bring and the knowledge that they've gained and learned throughout the district that as you pull those things together and work as a team and are held accountable together, that you can make the best decisions possible with the information that you have. So I think a big part of having a good board is having varying opinions, but then you learn to trust each other and hold each other accountable.
Thank you ma'am. Mr. Malone?
In my time on the board, discussion and disagreement and a lack thereof has never been a problem. We work it out. On the board over there, that white wall, there's the Wyoming School Board Association Code of Conduct statewide. The thing I get most out of that, when we have a disagreement, a vote split on the board about any issue, that code of conduct says when that board or any school board leaves that meeting, they are all in support of whatever that vote was. That way you don't have intramural sniping. It doesn't mean that if you've lost the vote, you have to start going out and give speeches in favor of it. It just- It just means that you take the vote of the board as being the vote of the board. And it prevents a lot of sniping. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Question seven is also going to be from the audience. What requirements are necessary for a calendar? And do you, as a candidate, know? What requirements necessary, necessary for a calendar? And do you know? And we're going to start with you, Ms. Castilian.
I did sit on the calendar board years and years ago. So I do know that we have to have a certain amount of days that are taught. There's a certain amount of training days that count. I know that our half-days count as, can count as a day of school for the kids. So, and I know that originally it changed August to May so that we could be done with our testing so that the school, we can turn all of our numbers in without we were having people that were having to work really long hours to try and get all of those numbers done into the state in time. And so I know that that's why our, we had shifted that. I hope that answers the question. That's what I know.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Malone?
Biggest issue since I've been here about the calendar is ending the semester before Christmas. So that especially high school teachers didn't have a two-week hangover there where that you could not really start anything else, but then again, you couldn't finish anything We are locked in. I think a hundred, the numbers may be wrong. A hundred and seventy-five days of classroom contact and five days of professional in-service, something like that. Well, it's kind of like, they like savings time. Do you want to cut the ends off that blanket and add it to that end of that blanket and still have the same size blanket? Everybody likes to get out for Memorial, before Memorial Day or thereabouts. And everybody hates starting before Labor Day or thereabouts. It's an unwinnable contest. And that's why the calendar committee and the board try their best. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stanton, you're up.
I don't know the exact days. I know it's, like John said, around one eighty total. And I agree with everybody, they want to get out before Memorial Day and don't want to go back before, until after Labor Day. I personally would rather go into June and start later because September's our best month in Wyoming generally, so. But the way sports operate, I don't think you've got a lot of flexibility. I do think the district has done a fair job of giving opportunities to voice, voice your opinion, if you have one, about how the calendar should be. To me, that's not, we've got a lot of, a lot of other things going on besides the calendar. I know it's important to a lot of people, but kids are going to have so many days off no matter where they fall. So to me, that's not, not a large issue.
Ms. Morris?
Like everyone else said, I know that there are certain set days that kids have to be in school. You have to count for in-service days. I don't know the exact numbers. If I was going to be on that committee, that's obviously something I'd do my research and I would know what criteria have to be met and what, what all those numbers were and how that affects the calendar.
Ms. Owens, you're up.
I'm guessing this question is for me. You know, I do realize that there's testing that takes place at the end of a quarter and it's easier to do before a break, a long break. I'm just, was bringing that up because I've heard a lot of teachers and parents voice the fact that it's hard to start school in the best weather that we have in the state of Wyoming because we only get a few months. So, but I think there are ways that the calendar could be adjusted. Is it terrible? Is that why I'm running? Absolutely not. But I just feel like it's important to have the input from the community, like I've said multiple times.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Stice?
I do have to say that I served on that committee and there are a set number of days that you have to go and there's certain things that have to go into the calendar. And every time, well, and I'll just be honest with you, I served on that for years and I won't do it ever again. Because it's so hard to make everybody happy. You can't make the staff happy, the parents happy. There's always something that somebody disagrees with. So it is a challenge. I think last year, it probably went smoother than it has in a long time. They put people in committees and kind of put the days together the way they thought it and then kind of combined which was the best with that. But it is a challenge. And I'm not sure there is a right calendar. I mean, there isn't. And there's always going to be something that we wish was different on it. And holidays are always an issue and so it makes it difficult. And I think, though, that we're going about it the right way. We're having a committee put together. That committee talks about it with differing opinion, opinions. People get to express what they like and dislike. We have parents involved usually. So, you know, I, I don't know another way to do that to make it more successful than we have done over the years. And I, I'm sure if we gave everybody a calendar here, that theirs would look different than the person next to us.
Thank you, ma'am. Question number eight. What experience do you have with budgets? When given a budget for the district, what will be your process to determine if it's a good budget for the district? And leading off with that one will be Mr. Malone, please. Yep, you.
I'm sorry.
You're the man in the hot seat.
Speaking of weaknesses of board members, I would say that budgeting is my number-one weakness. I'm not even sure I know enough about it for it to be a weakness. Here's what I do. I take the numbers that are given to us by the administrators and I compare that number to what the administration has decided that that particular administrator needs. How they come to that number, I don't know and I don't much care how many copies the high school needs and the paper needed to make those copies. I know they need some paper and I know there's a number about that paper on that budget. Okay, we have an auditor. My favorite board meeting every year. The auditor comes in and explains all the budget details. I have never fallen asleep in that budget meeting and I have never understood all the numbers that he brings up. The truth shall set you free. I just told the truth.
Ms. Owens?
I have a four-year degree in business management and budgets are actually something I love, I'm good at. My family runs on one income and we have six children and we still have money to travel. We still have money to do some fun things. That might mean that we have to cut out some of the stuff that really isn't necessary. And I feel that's the same way with the school. There's going to be the things that are important, like teachers. We have to have good teachers. We have to have training, good training for those teachers. We have to be able to give them the support that they need, as well as the other staff that are in the building. If we can do that, that I feel is the most important that we can do with a budget. But I, I guess I, I feel very confident in my ability to budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Castilian?
My experience with budgets, I do our budget at home and I also do it for our business for my husband. And we do have to weigh a lot of things when we go to buy a new piece of equipment. How beneficial is that going to be to our business? How long is that going to take us to pay that off? How many, you know, procedures do you have to do before you're to that point that it was worthwhile and you're making money off of it? So I am familiar in that way. I've never run a budget as big as the school district has. But I think as I would weigh those options, I think that the most important thing to ask yourself is, is this benefiting the most amount of people? I know there's going to be really hard decisions to make with the budget and, and that it affects everyone throughout the district. And it, like the calendar, is, I'm sure, something that not everybody's ever happy with. Everybody could always use a little bit of extra money in their budget. Nobody wants to have to be the ones to make the cuts, but I am willing to take a look at those and, and try and get creative to think of ways that we can benefit the most amount of people.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Stanton?
I, I do have experience with budgets with work. I run a small company, so I'm in charge of the budget with the other boards I've sat on. We always have a budget. I think that anybody on the board that thinks they can pick that, pick the school district budget apart down to the line item and argue about one thing or another is kidding themselves. That's not our job at this board, if I were a board member. That's not my job. My job is to look at where the big changes are and why one item is 20% higher than it was last year or 5% higher, whatever the ranges are. But you have to take for, you have to take the information that you're getting from the professionals and assume that it is correct. Doesn't mean you can't question it, but to think you're going to be able to take the budget and pick it apart line by line and argue one thing or another, I, I think is not possible. So I think it's key to look at where the big changes are and make sure that we're spending our money on big, you know, I think labor, teachers' contracts is always going to be your biggest expense. And everything else from that takes second fiddle, so.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Morris?
Yes, I do have experience with budgets. I create and manage the budget myself over at the Learning Center. So part of that coming into, again, I completely agree with Dan, you're not going to come, my little budget compared to their big old budget is going to be a little drop in the half. But as a board member, my job would be to look at past budgets and look where those, oh, I forgot, I'm sorry, I was supposed to move that over. Where are those changes? And ask questions because as a new board member especially, you do not have the benefit of having been on before, so you haven't been looking at it, you haven't seen it. And asking questions, not because you disagree, but because you want to learn more and understand why have areas changed? Why has this increased, that decreased? So you get a better understanding and you learn to follow that better as you're going. So ask questions, ask questions, ask questions. Otherwise, you'll still never get it, but at least you're trying.
Thank you, ma'am. Question number nine. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Stice. You almost got off easy. And I've been marking my list to make sure I didn't miss any.
I just have to say, I think we have some really good people in this district that take care of the budget for us. They do an excellent job of explaining it to us. They tell us, you know, what, where the changes are, what's happening, trends in the budget. And I believe, like you said, and I do it all the time, ask questions, ask questions, ask, ask questions. Donna can probably testify how many times I've been in her office asking questions about things. Because there is no way that you're going to understand every item line, like you said, of that budget. I wouldn't even want to see every item line. I think it'd be pages and pages. But, you know, you can look at areas and, you know, is this increasing, is that increasing? Do we need to make adjustments here because we really can't afford to do this anymore? I think that's what our job is to do. And, you know, if we find something that looks like, okay, you know, maybe we could make a change here and we had a committee just recently because we had to make budget cuts and everybody had their kind of niche and talked about what they thought should go and come. But we came to agreement on what it should look like at the end. And I think that's the main part of doing that is asking questions, having a discussion, finding out where the priorities are needed in the district and adjusting it that way.
Thank you, ma'am. Question number nine is going to be from the audience as well. What will you do about transparency? And you don't get a breather, Ms. Stice, you're up again.
I mean, as far as sharing information, I'm not sure what the question.
Yeah, I think sharing information, I, I have a limited amount here. I would say, what is transparency maybe to you and how will you display transparency as a board member?
I think this board does a really good job of, of that, I have to say. There are areas we cannot discuss by law. We can't give out information. And I think we're very good at doing that and I think that's important. I share information that I can share. But I think the hardest part for the staff and people that work for the district is that a board can't always tell you everything that's going on. We just can't. There's privacy things, we're protecting employees. I think that has to happen. That's very important to me, that we don't provide information that could damage a person. That's not our job. But we can share the budget. I think that's important. We can say what direction we're going in. And I think we do that quite frequently at the board meetings. And if we're not doing that, if we're not sharing some things, there's a reason for it usually. I think most of us, I'm, myself, I'm willing to share anything I know that I can share.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Malone?
Every Tuesday, no, one Tuesday night a month, we have presentations about everything from A to Z, curriculum, athletics and so forth. Some of those issues need a board yes or no vote. Sitting right here, it's kind of hard not to be transparent when you're voting on Budget's another thing. If you want to go by that thing line by line, feel free. It's public information. But if you want to know about why some student had some discipline issue that came before the board, or some teacher had a discipline issue that came before the board, or some administrator had a conflict that came before the board with a parent, no. It's a personnel issue. It's not meant to be public. It's not to be transparent. And if I have another chance to be on the board, I promise you, I'll never vote to change that.
Ms. Morris?
Obviously, like they said, there's times when you can share information, there's times you can't. On the times you can, you need to share and you need to be transparent. And I think you need to be ahead of that when you're making a decision and you can share why you may be voting for or against something, explain that. For people that aren't doing this and people that maybe have just popped in for a moment, having that background information, that's where you build trust. When you're willing to explain yourself and when you can, when it's appropriate, that goes a long way. And it opens the door for conversation and discussion and that just leads to a whole other level of transparency in the community.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Stanton?
I guess it may seem as not being transparent at times during a meeting where things go through without a lot of discussion. I think being prepared as a board member sometimes leads to that. It's important for a board member, even if they are prepared on a subject, that there be some discussion at the meeting so it doesn't seem like the decision was made before everybody walked in the door. I guess to me, that would be a transparency issue. As far as the what's privileged, what's not, those are pretty cut and dry. People should be keeping that close to the vest. And it's important that that information not be... And it's important that that information not be shared outside the boardroom when it's required not to be.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Owens?
Yes, I mean, I think with, with things that are made with the board, when I've come to board meetings, a lot of times the things they vote on, most of the time you don't hear anything about it. They just say, will you vote for yada, yada, yada? And as a parent, you don't even know what that means. So it would be nice if we kind of had some small understanding of what the board's really voting on. Because going to the board meeting doesn't necessarily help clear anything up. And I, I feel like that if there are things that are maybe confidential, which I completely understand, if that's affecting a lot of people, maybe that's why we had a big jumble with teachers this last year. That's okay. At least have the board bring some understanding or compassion that helps parents and people in the community realize that it's not just a thoughtless act, that it's something that has to happen so that the schools can function and those things can be taken care of.
Thank you, ma'am. And Ms. Castilian, you're now up, ma'am.
Yeah, so I'm in agreement with everyone. There's some things that will be able to be shared, some things that you can't. But with those things that can be discussed, I, as a board member, would be open to discussing with someone why I voted the way I did, what the background on that is, what information I have about why we're doing what we're doing or creating a certain policy or changing things in the school district. I think just being approachable is an important part of having transparency. If people know that you're willing to talk to them and provide answers, then I think they'll feel like you're providing information.
Thank you, ma'am. We have time for one more question. And this is going to be a question that was asked online from our audience that's on Sweetwater Now. And that question is going to be, how can you improve the relationship between the teachers and the administrators? And we are going to go with Ms. Owens on that first, please.
Okay. The biggest thing between being an effective team is having trust. And when our administrators and our teachers trust each other to be able to share information and not be, that by sharing information, they can actually come to a better conclusion of what to do in different instances. I think it will help the administrators know what kind of training teachers might need. Or it will help the administrator help the teacher if it's something they can help them with. It's a hand-in-hand thing. As, as, as the administrators and teachers work together, and that means that the, our principals and our administrators can't just be tied up in meetings all day. They have to be able to get into the classroom, like was said before. They have to be able to make time for those things that are important because otherwise, it's just paperwork and they really don't know what's going on in the classrooms. And, and that doesn't do anyone any favors because there's no communication between what's happening in the classroom and what's going up the line and can actually be taken care of maybe through effective training.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Stice?
I think in this year especially, we've done a lot towards that by having principals involved more in specific curriculum areas in the buildings, having meetings with those staff, finding out what they're doing, how they're doing it, giving better suggestions on how to do that. Again, that's building trust, having that communication going back and forth, actually knowing what those teachers are doing. I mean, walking through their classroom, sitting down and watching for a while. I think that's essential, that they're, they're doing that. And then having a conversation with the teacher with that afterwards, what they saw that was really exciting or what's something that can be improved. Until you start having those conversations, those relationships aren't going to build. And I really believe that this past year that we've done a much better job of doing that. And I hope that continues. I think that's key.
Thank you, Ms. Stice. Mr. Malone?
Have an administrator in their office with a really irate parent about what Johnny or Suzie hasn't or hasn't done. And then you be in charge of telling that parent, the principal will be here as soon as he walks through that classroom and does some observations. Good luck with that. Our administrators do the best job I've ever seen of being locked into the curriculum and locked into the classroom. But they're also the building administrator. They're not the administrator of irate parents and they're not the administrator of the curriculum in the classroom. The umbrella covers all of them. Will they ever have enough time to do all they want to do in the classroom? No. Will that irate parent ever understand that that's part of the principal's job? No. That's just the way it is.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Ms. Castilian?
Yeah, so I think improving relationships between the teachers and administration comes with relationships. As my kids were growing up, they went to Washington and I spent a lot of time there. And I saw our administrator was always in the classroom, walking around. She knew the parents, she knew the students, she knew the teachers. And that made a huge difference, I could tell with the teachers. When she walked in, they didn't clam up and be like, oh my heck, she's in my room today. They welcomed her in. She came in and helped them, didn't just sit and observe, but would come in and help them along with the kids with the project that they were doing or maybe one of them was struggling with a math problem. And she would help them with that. And I think that builds a lot of trust between the teachers and administration and helps them to be able to go to their administrator if they're having a problem and to not feel like then they're jeopardizing their job or their credibility with their administrator because they know that they know that they're doing a good job and that they're doing their best and that they have their kids' interests, best interests in mind. I, I agree that we need to continue to do trainings together and as the administrators understand the different curriculum, that that helps in their abilities to help the teachers as well. And I think we just need to also encourage both the teachers and the administrators to collaborate together as they problem solve and as they go about in their classrooms.
Thank you. Mr. Stanton?
I would agree that the training's important. It's good for the teachers and it's good for the administrators to be able to interact with each other as well as possible. I think the administration side is, is very important because there's only one or two or three of those people in each building where there might be 10 or 20 or 30 teachers. And so that administrator has to be able to balance all of those personalities and work with all those people on a daily basis. So it's very important that the administrator be a person that can handle all of those personalities. You can have 30 different teachers, but that administrator has to be able to work with all of them individually. So those, those positions are key to the district. The teachers are important, but the administrations are what make the building function as a whole. They keep the teachers in line, because sometimes they need that. And so I think it's important to continue to hire good administrators and train those people. And then make opportunities for the administrators and the teachers to spend time together beyond just them walking through their classroom and being observed. They need to have a relationship about the kids that they have issues with. And the kids that are doing well is in their class also. The administrators need to know those things. So making that time for the teachers and the administrators to be able to work together, I think is important. And it's hard to do with all the balancing of everything the administrators have to do on a daily basis, but I think it's important.
Thank you, sir. And we're going to end this evening's questioning with Ms. Morris.
I think improving the relationship between administrators and teachers starts with a relationship of mutual respect and understanding. A lot of times, there is a funnel of hierarchy that comes from administrators down to teachers. And they don't necessarily feel like they can ask questions or they can disagree with people that are above them, maybe seniority-wise or in the chain of command. I have heard a lot of commentary from teachers and rumblings about fear of retaliation. I think that's something that has to be addressed in the school district and that has to change. Teachers, staff, anyone in the building should always feel free and welcome to talk to their principal, any other administrative staff, without fear of their job or what they're doing on a daily basis. That starts with trust. And I think somewhere along the line, that trust got broken and it has to be built back up. So to do that, I would encourage everyone to treat others with respect and listen with an open mind, even if you don't agree. You have to keep an open mind and listen to what someone else has to say or you're not hearing them and you can't help fix it. So that's where I stand on that.
Thank you very much. We're going to start with our closing remarks right now. We're going to go in the same order as we did with our opening. So, Mr. Malone, you can go ahead and start, sir, please.
I've said this each time I've been a board candidate. It takes a lot of guts to put your name on a ballot. It takes a lot of guts to not just, as Theodore Roosevelt said, to be the man in the arena, to be the person that takes the heat, takes the glory, takes whatever. I compliment everybody on being able to be the person in the arena and not just on the outside looking in. If you elect me to the board, I've got an eight-year track record, for better, for worse. If you're expecting me to have one of those Road to Damascus feelings and change my approach, my attitude, my caring for the district, that's not going to happen. What you've had for the last eight years is the best I have to give. And if reelected, my only plan would be just to keep on keeping on, to do what I've done, learn some more about being a board member, and I will relinquish the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Ms. Owens?
Like I said at the beginning, I feel like I have a unique skill set to bring to the table with the board. And really, the only reason I'm running for the board is really not about me. It's about what I feel I can bring to the table to help make our school district even better than it is. Because we do have a great school system and we do have amazing programs. But I believe that they can be improved upon. And I believe as we support the teachers and they don't feel threatened in their jobs or their roles or the administrators, and there's the trust there, that, that will trickle to the children feeling stability in the classroom. And they will feel that stability and be able to move forward. And through effective training, I know there's training that takes care, takes place, but I think there are other trainings that can help us become better, united as a team and as a district and help the teachers get the training they need to, to really feel successful. And I know there's some trainings, new trainings that are coming out. But I, but I feel like I bring some unique characteristics and even compassion to the school board.
Ms. Morris?
Again, I, I'm here because of kids. Like this is what we're all here for. This is the business of kids. And we have to make decisions and choices that are good for them and good for our community. As cheesy as it sounds, these are, these kids are our future. But that's what they are and we have to have people that are willing to step up and ask questions and do their research and support everyone in the building that is helping build up our little people to be great big people. And I am here to do that. And we need more parents on this board that have kids in the school district. I firmly believe that. We have to step up and we have to be willing to use our voice and help them and help our district hear their voice as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Castilian?
Thank you. Again, thank you to the Green River Chamber of Commerce and the district employees that helped organize this forum. And thank you to those of you who came and those watching on Sweetwater Now. I think I can speak for everyone that we appreciate that you're willing to take the time to listen to what we have to say and to get to know each of us as candidates. I've appreciated the opportunity and the discussion that we've had tonight about the future of our school district. And I'm excited about the opportunity to potentially serve on the board. I think we have a wonderful school district and a lot of positive and great things happening. If I'm elected, I would work as a dedicated member of the board to ensure the best education for our kids. It's essential that we establish and maintain trust and that we build upon common goals. It's my intent to ask questions, to research and make knowledgeable decisions, negotiate agreeable outcomes and prepare our children to lead happy and successful lives. I don't think good governing comes by chance. I think it happens when people with good conscience come together and approach issues with an open mind and ask questions rather than assuming that we have all the answers and by committing to do what is best for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Stanton?
I wanted to echo Ashley, thanking the chamber and the GREA for putting this together. It's a good opportunity to hear everybody's stance on everything. Again, thank everybody here who took the time to come and listen. It's difficult to be an informed voter, so I think it's important that you spend the time to learn those things and the people that are watching online as well who couldn't make it in here. And also, all the candidates who are volunteering to serve as a trustee. John pointed that out before. Kudos for you for throwing your hat in the ring and stepping up. I think it says a lot about our community that we have a choice and who our, who our school district board is represented with. I don't have a background in education, but I think that balance on the board is important. And I do, however, I am married to an educator and I get to hear firsthand account of the frustrations and the celebrations that teachers experience. And I think we owe it to our kids and the community to continue to provide a quality education for all our students.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Stice?
I too would like to thank everyone that, who's been named already. And I believe that being on this school board is very rewarding. And it also is time-consuming and requires dedication to the students and staff. The last four years have been a big learning curve for me. And I'd like to thank the board members for helping me with that learning curve. If you can't work as a team, you don't get any further than just where you are. So I appreciate all the help there and from the administration. I feel now I understand the scope and responsibility of the school, of a school board member. And every day provides a new learning opportunity. I hope I can continue this journey with your support. I do want to take this time, because it's in a public forum, to thank those people that matter in our school district. We have 2,650 students and we have 509 employees that are required to take care of those children. We have administrators, teachers, counselors, paraprofessionals, business support staff, secretaries, nurses, transportation staff, nutrition services, custodians, maintenance and resource officers, and our PTO members who contribute a whole lot to that, too. That's a whole lot of people involved and a whole lot of different people that we have to know how to support in this district. And I think that's essential to continue to be a successful district. So thank you, everyone, for coming. It's nice to see you here.
I'd like to thank everyone. I'd like to thank Lisa and Greg for inviting me to be here tonight. Very eye-opening. Thank you to the candidates for your open and honest answers. Thank you to the media and everyone who showed up. I'm sure there's a lot of people here who'd like to talk to you afterwards if you're going to be around. And then I'm going to turn it over to Greg, but thank you again.
Barry Tippi and the staff of the Green River Chamber, the Green River Chamber of Commerce want to thank you all, think, want to say thank you to all the candidates. Conference, I want to thank you all, think, want to say thank you to all the candidates for being here tonight. I really appreciate your participation and your support, and good luck to you all. Thank you.
Thank you.